Welcome to the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Ray Omi from Vineyard Church giving the invocation. Welcome Pastor Ray.
Thank you Mayor Bark, council members. Thank you all for taking a moment with me to humble ourselves together before our God, through whom all authority and blessing comes to us. Let us pray. God our Creator, you instruct us that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, especially those who govern us, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. Tonight, we especially give thanks to you for protections afforded our city through the efforts of men and women in our police force, fire, and emergency services. Bless our city in the selection of a new police chief, who will faithfully serve and with your help, oh God, lead the men and women who wear the uniform with honor. Bless this council with wisdom that goes beyond understanding, to see more clearly the impact decisions tonight might have in the future for our good and ultimately, your glory. We ask all this in your name, Almighty God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Sendewie, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Freilich?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Seven Presidents, zero absent.
Thank you. Sendewie, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
I have one small change, Mayor. To item ten A, it's on the consent agenda. The, it's a request for street closure on Demerist Avenue for a sewer line repair. The agenda item materials state that the street would be closed on November twenty-first. However, they've asked that the date could be to be determined and as they've run in some issues with the weather. Once they decide when they are going to close the street, we will issue a notification to the public.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is, I'm going to have all the candidates for the police chief come up to the front, actually to the podium, if you would like so. And if you could, just basically state your name and also where you work. Yep, and then speak into the microphone, please.
Mayor, council, first of all, it was a wonderful meet and greet, appreciate it. I'm Adam Schaefer, I'm from Burlington, Iowa. I've been with the Burlington, Iowa Police Department for thirty years. Started out as a patrolman. I'm currently the major of operations, which is our equivalent to assistant chief. Look for the opportunity tomorrow to have some good discussion discussions with the interview panel about the position of chief of police for the city of Muscatine. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, administrator, all in present. Derek Turner, most recently served as chief of police for the Mobile Airport Authority, originally from the state of Michigan. As I've been asked a couple of times tonight, I'm blue, not green.
Mayor, council, Steve Snyder with the Muscatine Police Department, most of all of you know me, assistant chief currently, so.
Tony Keese from Muscatine, been here for about eighteen years, serves as captain of patrol right now for the patrol division. So, thanks for tonight, it was a lot of fun seeing everybody and wrap it up tomorrow.
Mayor, council, administrator, Jeff Hirock, lieutenant with the Muscatine Police Department. Spent the last thirty years here with the police department. Want to thank everybody here, community, as well as for coming down and taking part in tonight's activities. It was great conversation, look forward to more, so, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Hostins, I'm currently the deputy chief in Galesburg, Illinois Police Department. I've been there for twenty-six years. Army veteran, five years before that. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak with all of you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next, we are going to do a swearing in of firefighter Donald Peterson, so I'll have you approach the podium. Stand right here, okay. Now have your face in the booth. Have you raised your right hand? And repeat after me. I, Donald Peterson?
I, Donald Peterson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The constitutions of the United States?
The constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Iowa?
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
To start discharge all duties of firefighter?
Discharge all duties as a firefighter.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa?
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now?
As now.
Or for year after required by law?
Or for year after required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to have you sign right here, please.
Okay.
And after this, I have you go in the front of the dice to shake everybody's hand if you're okay with that, and then we'll get a picture afterwards, okay?
Sure.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome to the team. This is where we bail.
Now we have less exits.
So the interview's tomorrow, and then that's, it's, I don't know.
They don't love us anymore.
The timeframe, but I'm sure that there's two committees. There's a committee of three police chiefs from three towns, similar size to Muscatine, that are going to conduct interviews. And then there's a committee of the mayor, Carol, Julie, and Stephanie Romanoff, who are the managers. Those folks get back together on Monday, or have got something scheduled, I guess, to discuss. I think, isn't it, is it in the notes, city administrator notes? December first meeting, or the in-depth meeting that you'd have?
I didn't see that.
Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Would you like, would you like to, do you have anything on the, that's not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to speak of? Okay, great. All right, welcome. All right, so tonight, we have a nuisance abatement. Is Phyllis Phillips here tonight? She is not. Staff, I'm going to have you approach the podium, just to kind of give us a background, if that's okay, of what the abatement is?
What kind of information do you want in her absence?
So, Jody, if you could just go over, the council still needs to hear the issue even though the applicant's not here, so if you could just summarize real quickly what the notices were about, so council could make a decision.
Okay, so, there were two notices for twelve, two separate notices for twelve forty-four Dale Street. The first one was for a notice to abate the presence of junk in, in their yard, and I'll just show you the picture so you can have that. As you know, twelve forty-four is a repeat offender, they've received numerous notices over the past, so this was on October eighteenth, that notice was sent out. And then on October twenty-first, there was a fire in the garage due to an overloading of the electrical system, and at the same time, it was noticed that there was weeds and grass were in non-compliance as well, so they were sent, the garage was posted for the fire for no occupancy. This is what it looked like afterwards. There was an immediate cleanup of the, of the junk that's laying in the street there. It was in the right way or in the street, so it was removed immediately under a separate piece of code. And then it was posted for unsafe building, and then, as you can see, the grass and weeds were overgrown, so that notice was sent as well. Yesterday, Tara went out and checked again, and this is the current condition of the property. I'll answer any questions.
So what we'll do before deliberation is I'll ask for a motion to either deny the appeal or grant the appeal, and then we'll be able to discuss at that point. So if someone would like to bring that to the floor, that'd be great.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold, to uphold the decision of our Community Development Office to take whatever actions is necessary to clean the property up. I guess I don't see in the notes anything?
So, before we do that, I'm going to ask, you're okay. Is there a second?
A second.
So, we have a motion by councilmember Gendrich, and a second by councilmember Freilich. Now, is there any discussion?
I got one question. Does, does the abatement include removal of the burned garage?
If they do not remove it, it will include removal of the garage.
Councilmember Gendrich, I know?
Sorry. No, we're, they'll get a dangerous, they're going to get a dangerous and unsafe building notice, kind of like we do, we did with the structure over on Locust Street, so that's what code has to do.
So it's an addition to the abatement?
That'll be a separate notice, and it'll, the cleanup that would happen, assuming you uphold this, wouldn't include the garage at this time. They'll have a, there's a separate notice out there that will then allow us to deal with the garage.
So, how long, Andrew, how long will they have to take care of the garage from the time they receive the notice?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, okay.
Councilmember Gendrich, sorry I cut you off earlier. Do you have anything additional you'd like to share?
No, Mayor, I think I've forwarded the request to accept Community Development's decision, right?
Yes, sir. Any other discussion before we vote? Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Denial of appeal passes with all ayes. Thank you, staff. Next item is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items ten A through B, items eleven A through K, item twelve A, and item thirteen A, with bills totaling two million sixty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. And next, we will be going down to, going to get to it, public hearing. We have a public hearing regarding the sale of property at Lot One Arrowhead Lake. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by councilmember Freilich?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Hopkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes.
So Mayor, may I just comment? So typically, council would, in the order of business, consider, you know, approval of the sale under certain conditions. We're still working through some details of that, so we had the public hearing this evening because we noticed it for this meeting, but we'll bring that item forward at a later meeting.
Thank you. All right, next is from the city administrator item. So item A has six resolutions approving internal advances of funds for tax increment urban renewal projects. Each resolution will need its own separate vote. Number one, resolution authorizing internal advance of funds for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three urban renewal administration and professional support program. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none, councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is A two, is a resolution authorizing internal advance of funds and economic development grant for Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and Industry Support Program. Is there any motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by councilmember Freilich?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with public or council? Hearing none, councilmember Osborne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is A three, is a resolution authorizing internal advance of funds for small business forgivable loan program. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with public or council? Hearing none, councilmember Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is A five, is a resolution authorizing internal advance of funds for the downtown facade improvements forgivable loan program. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by councilmember Osborne?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with public or council? Hearing none, councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is A six, is a resolution authorizing internal advance of funds for the city wayfinding program year one. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with public or the council? Hearing none, councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is A six, is a resolution authorizing internal advance of funds for the city wayfinding program year one. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with public or the council? Hearing none, councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B, and item B has thirteen resolutions for annual appropriation for tax increment financing rebate obligations. Each resolution will need its own separate vote. Item B one is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations with, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, Wallview Developments LLC, GSTC Logistics, Inc. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with public or the council? Hearing none, councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is B two, resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, Wallview Developments Limited GSTC Logistics Project Number Two. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gendrich?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none, councilmember Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B three, is a resolution adopting, resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, Musco Sports Lighting Project Number Two. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by councilmember Freilich, and a second by councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none, councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B four, is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, for Harrison Lofts LLC. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with the council? Hearing none, councilmember Osborne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B five, resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, River View Hotel Development. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with the council? Hearing none, councilmember Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is B six, resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, HNI Corporation. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none, councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B seven, is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, White Distribution and Supply LLC. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none, councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is B eight, is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, Bush Development LLC slash Hershey Development LLC for the Hershey Building Project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none, councilmember Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Louis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B9. Resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the tax payment, appropriation of the, payment of the annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, JNB Oak Park KL. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Gordon?
Second, Osborne.
And a second by council member Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. Council member Osborne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Louis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is B10. Resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, NPSW Enterprises LLC, also known as Urban Commons. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gendrich.
We have a motion by council member Gendrich?
Second.
And a second by council member Brockert. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with the council? Hearing none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B11 is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year for Fridley Theaters, Inc. and Fridley Properties LLC. This is the outlot number one. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by council member Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. Council member Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B12 is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, Colorado Senior Lofts LLC. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by council member Louis?
Second.
And a second by council member Freilich. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with the council? Hearing none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B13 is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Refund, Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year, Grandview Senior Lofts LLC. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Brockert?
Second.
And a second by council member Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public?
I'd like to say something.
Is there any discussion with council?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, and it's not specifically about Grandview Senior Lofts, but Finance Director Leek and City Administrator Webb, thank you so much for guiding us always with the TIF funds. This really helps with our economic development, and even though this seems mundane going through all these, it shows a lot of great projects within town, and without your guidance and your resources, we wouldn't be able to do this. So thank you for your hard work. And if I could just give props to Nancy, because this, the, the level of accounting for these kinds of things, it's a lot. And so, you know, Nancy has invested a lot of time and energy in it because we know it's important for Muscatine, for economic development, and for our goals around housing. So thank you to Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Council member Osborne, how do you vote? Aye. Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Louis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is C. Resolution adopting the Iowa League of Cities Record Retention Manual as the official record retention schedule for the City of Muscatine. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by council member Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council?
I've got a couple of questions. I mean, this is a great project, and I thank you, Sinda, for finding the right resource and not inventing, reinventing the wheel. That's great. This is a heavy lift. I know we already have processes in place and probably record retention already, but to roll this out, do you have an idea as how long it might take? Is this a 2023 project? Are you doing department by department?
Most departments are ready.
Okay.
Use that as their standard, so. So really, it's, it's just an ongoing, it's more of a.
Formalizing it?
Thank you. Formalizing it so that we're all on the same schedule. Just so we have something to fall back on if we need to, but pretty much I talk to everybody in the departments and they're all using it already. It's just we get.
There's a lot of record keeping for the city. It's amazing. So thank you for finding that and doing this.
It helps with us because we're trying to go paperless, so it helps us in transition as we go paperless.
Well done. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Council member Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.